Welcome everyone, we are having a special council meeting to discuss a possible settlement regarding Ray Dotson's lawsuits that he has against the city. That's the only thing that's going to be on the agenda. We have his attorney, Mr. Bob Ballinger here, representing Mr. Dotson. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and y'all have a copy.
Roll call, don't you need?
Yeah, I didn't need to do that, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself. So, before we start, let's go ahead and have a roll call and establish your form. Thank you.
Papa Thomas?
Here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
Terry McLung?
Yep.
Joyce Seller?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Now you would go ahead and stand and pledge your allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now, I'm sorry. So, can I have a motion to discuss?
So moved, say again.
Okay. Mr. Ballinger, would you like to come up and make a short presentation on what your proposal is? Please, sir.
First, let me say I appreciate the city council for coming together in this emergency meeting. I know that everyone's busy, so if you guys just give us a few more hours this evening, I really appreciate it. Essentially, what I'm hoping to do is sort of wipe the slate clean and start over with the relationship between my client and the city. So, what we're hoping to do is work out a situation where we are able to sort of, you know, cancel all claims that could be brought from here, passed from each other. Both sides say, okay, we're going to start over new, and then look at the application and see if we can't get the application granted and have carriages running again in Eureka Springs. So, you know, I would say that I'd be happy to answer any questions. The application or the settlement you have before you is there are some things that could be changed on it if they need to be changed, so I want to be flexible as we can to get things worked out. But essentially, what my client would like to do is by the time the spring comes around, he'd like to be able to be running carriages in Eureka Springs and making money and making Eureka look good. So, you know, my client is an individual who's over five years, had two different franchises with Fayetteville, seven franchises in Fort Worth. I mean, he's a real deal carriage operator, you know, been doing it for a long time. And he kind of got off on a bad foot with the city, and hopefully we can kind of rectify that and move forward with that franchise. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm not sure what we're allowed to ask. I mean, what is appropriate to, can we, what kind of questions?
I mean, well, you know, I've been warned, I mean, well, I don't want to say anything inappropriate, and the Lord knows I do, very often.
Well, if you want to couch questions to Mr. Ballinger, you are quite well aware, I think, all of you, that there are pending litigation and a hearing set for in the morning. So, you need to be circumspect in what you say because everything is being taken down by our friendly little camera over there. And if we do go to litigation in the morning, this could very well be an exhibit. Although, settlement negotiations in Arkansas are typically ruled out of bounds for part of the litigation. I won't guarantee you a judge will do that for us today.
It's a little odd, a little different because we're talking about a city council meeting, so it's kind of strange.
Well, I've never understood what the litigation was in the first place, so I really don't know what it was we would be discussing tomorrow morning.
I would be happy to explain, and I know that your city attorney can also. It started with a ticket where, that my client received way back when on operating a franchise, I think, without a license, and there was some concern on that. And then, there was a-
A ticket, a parking ticket.
A ticket, or, I don't know if it was a parking, it was a city ordinance ticket. And then, my client apparently had filed a civil suit to get an injunction to prohibit the city from ticketing him further, and was able to get the injunction on that. And then, when we came back later, and I'll let, you know, your attorney correct me if I'm wrong, because he probably is more intimate than I am with all of it, we came back later and made an application, and then requested to have the court ask you all to come back and relook at the application and reconsider the application and vote it up or down, because you all tabled the application. And so, that was a writ, and so, essentially, you came back, and there were three people who voted present, and essentially, so what we've requested of the courts now is to ask you guys to look at it or to grant the franchise if you guys weren't able to work on it. So, that's where we're at right now. Now, the potential litigation is if, in the first place, you all violated any of his civil rights in not granting the application. Because the city ordinance is pretty clear that on the grounds of which you either grant the application or don't is basically, you know, public health, safety, that type of thing is the decision that you made, whereas it was, and, you know, last time when we were here, a lot of people felt like that they were being held hostage, and obviously, that's not the way we want to make you guys feel. But you could also have empathy a little bit with my client, where when we came with the application, you know, there was response several times was, well, if there was an ongoing litigation, if we could get the ongoing litigation settled, then maybe we could grant the franchise. And while I understand that, at the same time, this really wasn't one of the things that are set out in the ordinance that says these are the reasons why you can turn down an application. And so, he felt a little bit in the same place, and what I'd like to do is just sort of put all that behind us and say, okay, now going forward, we're going to promise to be good corporate citizens, good citizens of Eureka Springs, good business citizens of Eureka Springs, and with the understanding that you guys have real incentive to have a carriage operating, and so, moving forward, we hope to be pretty good partners for the city and make money for the city and make the city look good, and my client hopes to make a little money in the city.
Terry, you had your hand up?
Yeah. You made mention of the three votes that were voted present. How did the other three vote?
If I'm remembering right, and I wasn't actually at that meeting, but I think all three of the other ones voted no. But it may have been two, it was all three no's, so it was three no's and three voted present.
Thank you, that's all.
Mickey?
Okay. You say that he wants to be able to get this franchise stuff settled so next spring he can start doing his carriage stuff. He's had it about several years now, but has never used it much since one time.
And I don't know-
And he drew the route.
Yeah, I don't know how it was used or when it was used. The issue is that, in his mind, that that route by itself is not one that it could be financially feasible, but with this route that it would be. And so, you know, his intention is to get going and get this thing operating. And I, you know, I really don't have any other explanation to that other route, other than the fact that he just didn't see it as marketable.
Well, he's the one who came up with the route, you know. He chose if he drew it, he got permission from the police chief, yada, yada, and he's never used it.
It is my understanding that he actually, back then, was petitioning for two routes, and that the other route was granted to somebody else rather than granted to him back then.
He applied through a second route later.
Okay, and I, you know, I'm sorry, as far as that goes, that's all I know about that.
George?
Okay, now, my next question is directed to the city clerk. Has Mr. Dotson ever, according to our ordinances, because I was one of those people that voted present the last time, the reason I voted present was because he had never filled out an application properly. Now then, has Mr. Dotson ever filled out an application for a route properly with all the blanks filled in?
The one he has.
When has he done this?
The East Mountain Route that he has.
Okay, but-
That he doesn't use.
But the one that he wants, the one that he wants now, he has never actually filled out an application properly for that.
That's true. However, he's very close. Well, then, he's never really applied, okay.
Do you mind if I address that?
Okay.
Because originally, when we filled out the application, and the one that the lawsuit is based on, we thought an application, and in order to make sure the application was approved, we modeled it after Mr. Tharp's, it was already approved. Prior to you all changing the ordinance, changing the application, which you all did sort of in the mid-process, after we made application, you all changed the application process. And so, we actually had a deemed completed application back then, and it should have been deemed completed because it was substantially similar to previous applications that had been submitted, and so, it makes sense you were deemed completed. And then, most recently, when we applied, we wanted to, in order to try to make this work for everybody, we wanted to apply under the new statute so that you guys had all the information, new ordinance, so you had all the information. And we did apply, and we had a completed application, except that there was, you know, some information, and anyway, there was information that was provided to our depot location that wasn't 100% accurate, and then, they felt like they didn't want to get involved in the middle of it. And so, my hope is that we can work out a situation where it doesn't feel like there's a middle of it, where there's a partnership between my client and the city, and not an adverse relationship. Well, since then, we have had located a new depot location that was not consistent with the new ordinance, which we then rectified, and we had a depot location that the person is ready to enter into a lease agreement with us, but obviously, we don't want to lease it and pay money for it until we know we have the franchise location.
David?
I have two questions.
Sure.
One with the city clerk, again. On this franchise that's under contest, do we have, I just wanted to go clear, do we have an application that is complete? You said the words near-complete, that means not complete, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's getting closer as of this afternoon.
But not correct yet.
It is this time.
Okay, number two question. Do we also have a completed application from another party for that route?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I guess a couple of things that I would ask, that way everyone has clarity, is when you said under the route in question, you guys actually heard and took up for vote the other application. And the way the ordinance is written, the application doesn't even come before you until the city clerk deems it complete. So, the original application was deemed complete. Now, we have a new application-
Excuse me?
And I would say go to the city attorney and ask him if that were the case or not. But then, the current application that we are hearing essentially, I sat down and we went over it with Ann, we thought we got everything worked out before I even left, but then an email came from our depot location that said that they didn't want to provide the depot location because it would require a place for a truck to park, which the ordinance doesn't require that at all. It just requires a place which was original intent, and that's what me and Ann actually visited about that, and she, they communicated that to Ms. Ann, that the original place was just a place to park the carriages, pick up and drop off, main pick up and drop off location for the carriage, and that was what the ordinance requires. It defines what a depot is within the ordinance, and that was actually everything that we, the hotel expected for us to do. However, once they realized that there was controversy because they were contacted by the city about it, they decided they don't want to be involved in the controversy with the city. And I, you know, from my standpoint, you know, that's a shame that that all happened, but now we're working on trying to find another location, and the last location that we had apparently is off the route with the changes that were made in the ordinance, but now we have a location that's right on the route, and it's in good shape, we just have to have a franchise before we're going to be able to enter into lease with it. And so, if, the question is whether that's deemed complete or not, we have a depot location. What I would ask is, my guess is, the other individuals who have a completed application, I would imagine they have not entered into a lease yet. They probably will enter into lease contingent upon getting the franchise, because they don't want to come up all the way from Russellville, two and a half hours away, and lease a piece of property they can't use. So, they're probably exactly in the same position we are, where we have a piece of property identified that would be the depot, and we'll enter into a lease to acquire that as soon as we have the franchise. So, I would guess that they're probably in the same position of completeness that we are.
David?
I definitely understand where it's coming from. This explanation is interesting, and I certainly don't feel this is the place to have the trial. So, but I want one more time to ask the city clerk very clear. At this point in time, have we ever had, in this process, a complete application that could have come to council for review from Dotson?
For the rep, for the lot, for the route we're discussing?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Thank you.
But we're close.
Okay.
But, thank you.
Okay, there, I'd like to clarify something here. In the January 12th meeting where we voted on this, we, it was not our idea to vote. We were forced by court order to vote, and it was made very clear at that meeting that the application was not complete, that it was not according to our regulations, to our rules, it was not according to law, and our attorney said, well, you should vote the way you feel about it anyhow, because a writ of mandamus cannot be denied. So, I just want to correct that. It was not us denying, it was not an act of ill will to deny that. We denied it because it was against the law, and we were forced to do that.
And I guess one of the things that I would say is, there have been a change in the ordinance in the middle of that, and so, I do understand that, under the new ordinance, it wasn't complete. However, the action started with the completed application that was submitted, that the council actually took up and considered, and then tabled. And on multiple occasions, individuals cited the reason for that as the open pending litigation. And in fact, on January 12th, city council member also said that same thing, that isn't, there's still ongoing litigation. And so, you know, and honestly, what I guess I would like to say is, it'd be nice if we could actually all put that behind us, hence the settlement agreement, and say, okay, that's water under the bridge, you know, I have a hard-headed client who's not always the easiest person to work with. However, my colleague over here also has a hard-headed client that's not always the easiest person to work with. And so, you know, the issue is now, what I'd like to do is say, for the city of Eureka Springs, the best, in the best interest is to have somebody who knows how to operate a carriage, who's good at it, has done it successfully in other places like Fayetteville and Fort Worth, who wants to come in and provide this service for the city, who's not two and a half hours away hauling a horse, you know, if they're going to do it, every day, back and forth hauling a horse, but is located here close enough that we could actually provide this. Now, it would have to be contingent upon us having the depot location nailed down, but the other individuals who are applying for this ordinance would be in the same situation, where I'm sure they have not already got a lease. I mean, if the city clerk wants to go grab the lease, copy of the lease and provide it, then I could be proven wrong. But my guess is, they don't already have a lease nailed down, or if they do, it's contingent upon getting the franchise, because that'd be poor business since on their part. So, you know, we obviously are not going to operate a carriage without having a depot location, and that's the thing, is that I think we're in a position where it'd be deemed complete contingent upon us entering into that lease, which I think is forthcoming as soon as we have the franchise agreement. So, you know, as far as that goes, you know, at one time, we did have a completed application. The rules changed midstream. We don't have a completed, or didn't have a completed application back then. Now, we have a completed application pending approval and finalization of depot location. Although, right now, our application has a depot location with an address, it just doesn't, it's just not confirmed because of the fact that we need a franchise first.
James?
For the city attorney. In your opinion, is this a continuation from the initial application for the franchise that was rendered complete before we changed the ordinance? Is this, is there a continuity from that initial application, which by Mr. Ballinger's statement was complete, that this has been an ongoing process to where we are today?
I take somewhat a different view of what he's saying just a little bit, and let me explain what I mean. The application that was put in in October, I believe, and first considered by council in November of last year, was an application that matched material that was, matched to an old code. The application should have been updated at some point, and there's an argument that can be made that Mr. Dotson, when he filled out his application, may have created that application or printed it from some other source than from directly from the city. But there is a separate application now. There was not necessarily an ordinance change, there was an application change between the November, or the November meeting and the January meeting. That application was, at the January meeting, that was so bantered about, is an application that matches an ordinance passed in 2012.
And let me say this, the ordinance, at least my understanding of it, and it'd be easy to go back because I've actually looked at the date of the ordinance, but the ordinance changed from when we first made application and in January. So, the ordinance and the application both changed after we made application. And so, it was actually after the pending litigation that there was an application change. And so, it would be, it'd be fairly easy to go look up and see when you guys actually amended the ordinance, but it's my understanding that it was, and that's, and that the original application was, would have been deemed completed because it actually was submitted and heard before the city council. And it was only after that that we filed the lawsuit. That's correct. And so, the, see if there's actually been an updated amendment to that ordinance, because my understanding is that there has been.
This is the one and only in the last four or five years?
Okay.
Only the 2012 ordinance.
All right, so it has not been amended, and it, you know, it says as of 2014, is that because that's when it was printed?
Correct, because someone asked me for a current code, so I just put that. But then, Mr. Weaver asked me for one that was applicable in one date and one that was applicable in another, so I adjusted his and certified his the way he requested.
And I guess that, you know, that is confusing to me, because I actually thought that at one point I saw where the ordinance was changed, just like a month after we made application. So, I mean, that's a fact that's easy for us to determine, but-
Could you mention those dates that you requested certification?
What I did was I requested certification for the, as of the two dates, that the January 1st and November 4th, which would be corresponding to right before the two councils.
And they're exactly the same.
And what I'd say is, I am not above making mistakes, so it's possible that that's the case. But even so, if that were the case, the application was deemed completed because it was issued, taken up by, consistent with the code, taken up by the city council, and that is, so, the question is, is this an ongoing, is this application an ongoing concern from the original application? And the answer is no, because we applied for a new application in order to try to provide you guys with the information and everything that you wanted, and in order to comply with the new code, we decided to do it. However, there is a pending litigation lawsuit that was filed that would have preserved the original ordinance, and the question is whether or not at that time, in that situation, you should have accepted that. And so, you know, we could, as part of the settlement, we could agree to go back and approve the original application, if that made people feel better. But from my standpoint, what we thought is, it would be better, and it would look better from our standpoint, to come to the city council and say, you guys have an ordinance that says this is how you fill it out, regardless of how you've approved ordinances or the franchise in the past, we're going to make it consistent with your ordinance, and that's why you have the current application, because the issue of depot wasn't even originally a problem at all in the original application.
David?
Question for the attorney. Tomorrow morning, in front of the judge, what exactly is the point that is being presented to him? What, in a nutshell, exactly what is he supposed to be ruling on tomorrow, please?
The expectation that what the court will take up is the issue of whether the writ of mandamus was correctly applied, not the issue of whether or not the franchise should have been granted. The limited issue, as I understand it, is to be whether or not the writ was properly applied, because that is the motion currently, I think, is drawn by Mr. Story, which I guess is now Mr. Ballinger's partner?
Yep.
Congratulations, by the way.
Well, we'll see how that works.
So, the case tomorrow has to do with the writ?
Has to do with the writ.
And the writ was-
The writ demanded that a vote be taken. In a brief filed by Mr. Story, Mr. Story has indicated that he believes the writ should have dictated not only that you take a vote, but that you approve.
And your opinion is?
I first take the umbrage with the whole writ process and whether it was properly granted originally. But beyond that, and that is probably beyond the scope of tomorrow's hearing, I think it's likely that a judge will have to read the mandamus himself and make a decision as to what it means, because the same judge is not sitting now that wrote the original mandamus.
So, since this discussion we're having tomorrow, and this settlement is, this settlement then really has nothing to do with what we're going to court for tomorrow, doesn't it?
It would settle the issue if it was accepted. What is apparently drafted by Mr. Ballinger is to encompass all problems that have existed between the city, Mr. Dotson, and any entity to which he has ownership, or prior ownership, or may have paint ownership, I think.
And then also, any individual, so any individual liability associated with the council members would also be covered.
So, this is just to get rid of all that, but the judge is just going, we're just going tomorrow to talk about the writ?
I think the writ is the issue the judge has planned for, because we are one of, what, 12 things on the docket, I think, in the morning?
Yeah.
So, I don't expect he's wanting a three-day trial.
Got it, thank you.
Mickey?
Okay, so you are now in heaven for a little while, Mr. Dotson's attorney, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know of any and all legalities that he's got going on in regards to the carriages and the city and so on?
I think I do.
Okay. So, if, what, basically what you're saying is, if we agreed to this settlement, that ends all actions on his part against the city, does that include any upcoming lawsuits that he has planned?
Well, the issue- Well, the issue is, the answer is, yes, if you're talking about any action that occurred up to this point. So, if we had a civil rights lawsuit against the city for discriminatory action in how you approved the franchise, for instance, that would be cut off with the settlement agreement, because that action happened prior to this date. Now, the, the question then would be, if in the future, you guys decide to stick your finger in Ray Dodson's eye, or whatever, you know, at that point, there's, there is a new cause of action, and so it would be, you know, that wouldn't be taken care of. Same thing for you all, is if he comes out and he violates some ordinance, or does anything, that is not covered, and it's not contemplated in this agreement. It's only up to and through today, and after that point, then, everyone's going to act nice or be interested.
So, this then covers the lawsuit that he's got planned against our action of re-awarding the franchise to Miss Stark?
That'd be correct.
So, that did not get filed today as he planned?
No, I, I mean, this is the thing, is, I'm not in the business of trying to pick fights with the city if I can avoid it. So, what we're doing right now is trying to work out some, some differences and make it where everybody's a winner. So, now, having said that, obviously, you know, if that's not, if I'm not able, I mean, my client also wants to make sure that his rights are being protected, and just like you guys would want to in your case, and you want to protect the city, well, my client is, is obviously not, not foregoing any potential lawsuit that may happen in future, unless we can get something worked out, obviously.
So, in other words, the fact that he wanted to combine two routes into one, so he could legally have two routes, because three is illegal according to our laws, and we went ahead and re-awarded an existing franchise, we updated it as law provides, if we do this settlement, then he's not going to bring that lawsuit against us for doing that?
Well, the, I think the, the, the way to couch that is, any action that happened before today, there's no lawsuit that can be brought. I, I would say that there may be a little bit of confusion in exactly how all that came about, but essentially, the answer is, there would be no lawsuit for any action that, any acts that happened prior to today. Now, you know, that doesn't protect the future, which nobody here would want to, want to do that, but it protects from today backwards.
And so, if we don't agree tonight to settle, not only do we already have the lawsuit that's pending, but we get hit with another one?
Well, that, I, I don't know. I mean, this thing is, is, we have a, we, tomorrow, we have a, a hearing, and at the hearing, the judge may grant the franchise, may, you know, grant an injunction requiring you all to grant the franchise. If that happens, then, then I, I don't know with my client, whether or not he'd want to still bring the, the civil action. I can't at this point answer that question. But the, the issue is, if the, if it's agreed to, my client doesn't have a legal right to bring a lawsuit for acts that happened prior to today.
So, in other words, we're being held hostage?
Well, and this is the thing, is what I'd say is, I, I guess I can see how you would feel that way, however, my client sort of, I mean, just by you saying that, that is, the city is kind of holding, holding this franchise agreement hostage in regards to litigation, which, which was mentioned several times by city, city council in two previous meetings, that is, the ongoing litigation, where my client was defending his, his rights and, and essentially, a criminal court with that ordinance, was, was the prerequisite for him getting a franchise agreement. And I would just say that, you know, he could have felt a little bit held hostage that his civil rights were being held up in order to get the franchise. What I, what, what I visit with my client about, and we're good with, and I hope the city is good with it today, is say, look, maybe everybody, and even if more fault can be put on my client as far as the personalities involved, didn't get together and work together right. We're saying, we're going to sign this paper saying, okay, nobody was, is held at fault, everybody is, is waiving any claims, and we're going to be good to each other in the future. And, and hopefully, if we are able to do that, we'll be able to have a good working relationship, where you've got a, a carriage operator who's very clearly experienced, very good at, at what he does, and it, you know, it probably won't be Ray here, it'll probably be one of his drivers who are here most of the time, and is here making money, and for his self and for his business, but then also making Eureka Springs look good as there's old-fashioned carriages running up and down Main Street again.
Well, then, why doesn't he just drop the lawsuits to show his, um, good hopes of being able to work together?
You know, that would be wonderful if that were possible. However, I mean, what you've just basically kind of said is, if my client is willing to give up his civil rights, then you guys may consider granting the...
No, it's been nice, and why doesn't he just drop the lawsuits to show good faith?
And what I would say is, we're, that is exactly what we're trying to do right now, is that we're going to drop the lawsuits and say, no lawsuits at all, as long as we can work out an agreement for a franchise.
That's a settlement, that is not dropping the lawsuit.
James?
Indifference?
James?
We really have to ask ourselves why, why we're not granting this franchise. And we have to understand, like we did during the food truck workshop, that we can't put faces on these franchises. We can't say, I like this guy, or I don't like this guy. This is about the rules, and if there's an I that's not dotted, or a T that's not crossed, we should not be the one standing between someone wanting to do business in the city of Eureka Springs. We've, we have a responsibility as a council to deal with business in the community, whether we like the people or not. So, you know, like I said, if there's just a minutia that's not been fulfilled, why are we building a wall and not engaging in commerce? I mean, that's pretty much what we're supposed to do in this community. So, take the faces off of this, and look at this as just another franchise application that's gone through the mill. But when the day is done, in my opinion, this has been an ongoing process, be it ham-handed and poorly handled, I'm not going to say on whose part, but, you know, we're looking at granting a carriage franchise that will alleviate ourselves with all these lawsuits, or, you know, having to go to court, potential liabilities. Personally, I, I don't see, you know, where we have the ability to keep throwing up a wall regarding this franchise.
David?
Tomorrow, we go about the writ. Mr. Ballinger just said the judge could say that we have to award the franchise to it. Is that correct? If we're going for the writ, why would the judge jump that far ahead and say that we have to give him the franchise? And if that's the case, and the judge awards the franchise, then he gets it anyway, so we didn't even need this piece of paper, number one. Number two, we have two applications for the route under question. We have two. We have one that's been deemed incomplete, and we have one that's complete. So, we have two franchises to consider for that route, do we not?
You do have two, um, applications at this time. It depends on which of Mr. Dodson's applications you consider to be most complete, and I think he's arguing that it should be the one in January.
Well, and that's the question.
With certain additions that have now been made.
But under the current code and with the current application, I would say that's up to...
So, if that is correct, the January application for Mr. Dodson could be deemed to precede the application that was presented three weeks, four weeks ago.
Even though it's totally incomplete?
Well, that would be up to the council to make the decision. Now, you also have a couple of other issues that you may want to consider before you directly consider your agreement here. One of the issues may be that this gets rid of the lawsuit that was pending prior to that, the one over the automobile that was used on the streets. But at that time, that was an issue the city felt very strongly about operation of, or not operation of. This does not address whether that operation ceases or does not cease. It only goes away with the lawsuit, so that there's never a final hearing for a final injunction there of whether the city can proceed or not to proceed on its city ordinances to ticket for various offenses that it believes are correct. Now, it also, this document has one flaw, I think, that would have to be addressed, and I didn't address this with Mr. Ballinger before, and I apologize to him for that, but it mentions the criminal action, but in not so many words. I think there's a resolution in that case, and if there's a resolution already in that case, I don't know how we go back and set that aside.
It's my understanding that, that there has never been an order entered on that case, so if, everything was presented to the judge, and the judge has never entered a final order. If it has, I don't know anything about it.
I, it is my understanding, from speaking with the district court clerk, that the judge did enter a final order.
Just recently?
Recently.
Okay, so, I guess, that, it's surprising that I don't know about that. I wonder my client. I mean, how recent are we talking about?
I'm told within the past few weeks. I don't know, and I think some confusion may be, lie there, because you are not, and neither is Mr. Story, entered directly on that criminal case.
Right, as is I.
It would be Mr. Val and Mr. Mickish.
What I would say is, and I, I would probably want to check with my client and verify, but actually, the way it's drafted, it probably still would be okay, because it doesn't specifically reference that, that case. So, if there is other out there violations of ordinances that you have, then essentially, the city is not going to pursue anything else on that. It may be something that is easy enough to draw, draw a line through if we needed to, but at the same time, I think it's also still okay, because we're saying, you know, if there's other violation of ordinance you want to, want to hang on my client, then there, then those violations you couldn't with signing that. But, it is, it's, can you say how that was resolved?
It's my understanding that the judge ruled in favor of the city.
Okay.
George?
Okay, um, and you're also, you're also referring to, um, earlier, a long time ago, when you first started discussing this with us, this business that Mr. Dodson wants some reassurance that he will never ever be issued a ticket for any violation, parking violations he makes?
Yeah, no, he doesn't, he's not getting that assurance. That, that would be, you know, in the settlement agreement, that's if he has a parking violation prior to today, that you couldn't. So, if he got a ticket yesterday, then in theory, that would be waived, although I'm, I don't even think that that necessarily would be the case.
Okay, now, I have...
I don't think he got a ticket yesterday, so we're safe.
Okay, now, I have one question here, because we, we approve franchises in the order in which they're applied for generally. Now, as I understand it, Mr. Dodson has never properly applied for a franchise. He has never, it eludes me why he has never filled out the paperwork properly, because this has been mentioned to him many, many times. But we do have two franchises that have been applied for properly. They have fulfilled all the regulations. Now, do either one of these franchises, if they're approved, do they overlap the territory that Mr. Dodson wants on his franchise? Because these people have done this right, and if we consider them, then what happens if we, um, if we let Mr. Dodson go ahead and he wants the same territory? Do they overlap? Can I address that to the city clerk? Do you know?
The January application, when it was reviewed...
Yeah.
Did not overlap another route.
Okay, and it still doesn't overlap, even if we granted these other two franchises that have been applied for? The ones that we discussed at the other council meeting?
One franchise is for the same route.
Yes. James is correct. The, the last one, the Karen Garret route, is the same route that's being discussed here.
And since Mr. Dodson has never properly applied, where does that put us legally? Are we between a rock and a hard place here? What do you say, Tim?
Well, you would have to, at this point, for, for settlement purposes, deem the January one appropriate with changes that are made tonight, because he still has his depot issue.
Which then, well, okay, do we know whether, okay, 70, 173 South Main, is that, that restaurant that sits on the side of the hill, Casa Colina?
There's a newer bit of information that came in.
And that is, I think that's actually the newer bit of information.
This is, well, after the discussion about Casa Colina...
Yeah.
And the danger of that section of road...
Yeah.
Before 15, Mr. Ballinger sent this one that includes a possible agreement from Ken Pedelson, which is, of course, a much safer area.
Where?
Which, you know, where Fresh is.
Oh, down on South Main?
Right.
It's across straight from Sunny's Pizza.
North Main, yeah.
It's across the street from Sunny's Pizza.
And so, there would not be any...
The original plans.
And that isn't the same route that was applied for at the last council meeting?
No.
Because doesn't that go on South Main?
No, well, the last council meeting was the upper route.
Okay, okay.
The Karen Garret route is, is this route.
Okay.
And if Ken were to agree, because this is pending, the agreement, what is still lacking is the, the list of pickup and drop-off addresses that's very specific in code as a, as a matter of public safety. So, if that were also conjured, the application would actually be complete.
Okay, and as, and at this point, there is no such thing as an amended animal-drawn-vehicle franchise ordinance, because we never have amended it. So, whatever is referred to there, it doesn't exist, the amended ordinance we're talking about, the, an ordinance that we've been working on since 2012, okay?
That is the...
Yes, that's the ordinance, and it's never been amended. I know I never voted to amend it, so it's never been amended.
Could, could I address the issue of the pickup and drop-off locations? Because the, the ordinance, while it says that you have to include pickup and drop-off locations, or it has a place for you to include pickup and drop-off locations in the application, or it itself says include the pickup and drop-off locations, what my client is, is doing is saying, our pickup and drop-off location will be our depot. Now, there may be some other provisions under the law that would allow, allow him to, and I don't remember where I saw this, but if someone was flagged down, that they were allowed to pick up and drop off if he was flagged down. However, and that was my understanding, and I have not had a chance to look that up, but if, even if that's not the case, our pickup and drop-off location is only our depot until we get other pickup and drop-off locations located, and we will have that before we pick up and drop off, we'll have that to, to supplement the application to the city clerk, which we've talked, talked about before, that, you know, you can't guarantee that a pickup and drop-off location's always going to be the same. So, when that happens, we'll provide that information to the city clerk, so that the city always knows where our pickup and drop-off locations are. And, you know, we, we're, well, I just say that there are some things that we're working on still developing, but obviously, we're in a time-sensitive situation. So, we do have a pickup and drop-off location, so long as we get the franchise in our, in our depot, and that should actually satisfy the ordinance itself.
David?
I, again, I don't, no sense having trial here or not have it here. I think everybody understands that. Are we about ready to float a motion, see what happens?
James for the discussion.
Just want to see.
Well, you know, go for a motion. I mean, it's...
Let's go for it. I make a motion that the mutual release and settlement agreement as presented to council by Ray Dodson and his attorney of record be denied.
I'll second that.
Do we really need that then? Why don't, can't we just, just let it die?
I'm not sure that a motion can't, a motion has to be made in a positive manner. I don't know. Mr. Weaver?
No, motion can be couched as drawn by the alderman, and if that's the way they wish to vote it, they can vote it, as long as all understand, as always, the motion as stated.
Ms. McCall?
This is for Mr. Weaver. Do we even have to have a motion? Can we just, if, if, well, I guess we've forgotten.
A adjourned meeting.
You got a motion in seconds, so...
We can take them back, if that's what's needed. Never had this kind of meeting before.
Jump in, Mr. Weaver.
You're not required to vote, to, uh, in session, but if you wish to, uh... You're not required to vote to, uh, end the session, but if you wish to, uh, it would probably be a, a more conclusive way of, rather than just half of you walking out and breaking the quorum.
Are you recommending a vote, then, my bris?
I think a vote is probably appropriate.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Let's have a roll call vote on the motion to deny the...
Mutual settlement agreement?
Yes. Or not accept the agreement.
Okay, voting to deny. Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Tebeto?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, Bob. See you tomorrow. Thanks for, for trying. All right.
We got a motion in a second.
Did I hear it?
Yeah.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.